So seven.
We'll make it go fast.
Okay, we're on.
Okay, go ahead.
All right.
Whatever you'd like.
So we, the city commission asked us to talk about our definition of new construction and demolition. Because there have been, well, I'm gonna give you one example, but my understanding is that there are other examples of this too. I wasn't able to get those, information about those today. It's possible that folks in the room might have more examples to talk about, but anyway, there's some recent construction in the McLaughlin district where we have designated and non-designated structures. And so the city commission has asked the historic review board to really look at our definition of new construction and consider how we might change it potentially to address these issues. So, to be a quick summary of what we currently do. So for the purposes of historic, of the historic overlay, we define new construction as, of course, a new building or structure. So like a new accessory building, a brand-new commercial residential building, larger than 200 square feet. Or for a non-designated structure, if an addition is 30% or more in area of the original volume of the structure, or sorry, not volume, but of the original area of the structure, then it's also considered new construction. So if somebody's building a large addition that reaches, passes that 30% threshold on their home, even if it's not designated, then they are required to come to the board for approval. If they're building an addition that is 25% of the size of their structure, then they do not have to go through any review process and they don't have to meet any historic design guidelines. So they're treated just as any other non-historic structure in the city where, you know, you just get your building permits, you meet your setbacks, and you're good to go. So, a few, well, before we go through there, I will give you the example. So, the recent example, 611 Third Street. So this structure was, is not designated, but it was inventoried. You know, every structure in McLaughlin was inventoried. And it was deemed to be compatible, but not, it doesn't have the historic status as designated structure. So, the owners left up one wall, so it has this attached garage here. So they left up this sidewall here, and the foundation, and the floor. And then, basically are remodeling or rebuilding the structure with a much larger second story, much taller second story. We ended up looking at the, so it did have a finished attic. Even, it doesn't really look like it could, but believe it or not, it did have a finished attic. And you could see that, I have, there are other photos where you could kind of see the second floor, the wallpaper on the inside of the wall that remained. And so, that, that finished attic space was considered, you know, part of the original area of the house. And so the new upstairs space was only slightly larger than the original finished attic space, which means their total addition of square footage didn't reach the 30% threshold. So that's what it looks like today. And the original, original square, square footage was 11:05. With the remodel, it's 13:16, which is a 19% change, increase. So even though the character of the house, the character of the house has changed a lot, and it looks like it's potentially twice the size, the calculations, you know, the numbers didn't get them to that threshold for review. So I think this is, at this point, it's, this isn't a common occurrence. But, you know, I think we could, we could see it becoming more common as property values go higher, you know, and people want to kind of max out their space on their property. So, the, to go back to kind of what the issues are with, with our definition, we talk about 30% or more in area. We don't really define area. There's gross area, there's habitable space, there are building code definitions, but we don't really, you know, specify what area is. So, you know, do we count finished attic space, finished basement? You know, what should count as area when we are calculating this? The 30% doesn't account for large changes in height, meaning that previously compatible structures like this one on Third Street could become very incompatible with certain kinds of additions. And then, we're treating, and this might be fine, but we're, we treat additions the same whether they're on the front, the back, or the side. So someone could put an addition on the front of a house that completely changes the character of, you know, and the look of the front of the house. And, and, you know, that could not reach the 30% threshold and not be reviewed. So these are the reasons why the commission wanted us to look at this issue and maybe think about revisiting this definition, or clarifying, or tackling this topic in some way. And then I can talk about demolition, but I will just pause and let you all ask questions or make comments. What, what, we don't need to talk about potential solutions today. I think the question for today is, does the board feel that this is something you'd like to take on this year? And, you know, have some more work sessions, do some public outreach, potentially make some code change recommendations to the city commission? If so, we do have funding that we're requesting through the state certified local government grant, where we would pay for an intern to help us with this and do some public outreach. And it would pay for our, you know, communications to, to all the property owners. And that's something that we could start this summer, i-if we wanted to. The other option, I think, is knowing that we're going to be updating our comprehensive plan. Starting later this year, we're gonna go through community visioning. We're going to be, you know, having summits on various topics related to, you know, related to the comprehensive plan, including historic preservation. That could take, that process to get through the comprehensive plan, update, adoption. That could take a couple of years, easily, if not more. But that might, we could wait until after that is updated so that we have a little bit more guidance from the community on big-picture stuff. So I don't necessarily have a recommendation for you either way, but just, that's kind of where we're, what question we'd like direction on tonight is, do you want to tackle this this year? We have some funding to tackle it, or would, do you think it's better to wait until we do the comprehensive plan update? With that, I'll let you.
What else do we have on our plate, potentially, for the rest of the year? That would, you know?
Yeah.
And if, what it is, what priority level does, is it at compared to this?
I think, other than just regular development review, the only thing that is planned, really on your plate for this year is to, when the comprehensive plan update does begin, you know, there might be a work session or two where we would talk about that, or ask you to come to a summit or something in the fall. So we don't really have a whole lot on our plate as far as non-development review goes.
Ah, I'm confused here by the title of what we're talking about.
Yeah.
Definitions of new construction. What we're actually talking about is the threshold for requiring historic design review. Presumably, this project had a building permit, and there was nothing in the process that required historic review. Apparently, because I don't think it ever came here.
Right, because it didn't reach that 30% threshold, so that's why it didn't come to you.
It's not contributing.
And plus, that upstairs actually had a finished attic up there?
Yeah.
What did it need to, but like that wide? I mean...
I mean, according to their plans, and the, you know, they, they gave us drawings and some numbers. And according to those numbers, it was a decent-sized space.
Wow.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Wow, for very small people.
So they, it's not so much the square footage as it is the massing, is really what it comes down to in this case.
Right.
This doesn't even look like the same house.
You know, square footage...
Way mannered shape before.
Right, and square footage, you know, we could talk about floor area, which, you know, i-if the ceiling is so sloped that you only have three feet of height.
Right.
You know, that, should that count as area, right? I think that's the question, because our definition doesn't specify that.
What I was getting at is, is the, the square footage, the area, or the space, the appropriate criterion to use to determine whether or not review is required? It seems like what our objection to this particular project is would be the significant alteration of the exterior appearance of the property or the structure.
Total.
Yeah, I was, then, why don't we just say that?
Well, I think our code needs to be pretty clear, you know, on when review is required, because that part should be pretty clear and objective. But saying a significant change to the exterior is very subj, uh, subjective.
Subjective, yes, well, I don't think anyone would argue that this is not a significant alteration. Wouldn't anybody?
No.
Yeah.
Well, for one thing, when you're basically adding a complete second floor, even though, you know, they may have counted the finished basement, they might have had it go out to where, you know, but it's just, when you're completely raising, it's, I don't see how it wasn't over 30, you know, percent.
Well, there, so in this case, even, even if the original structure had had a steeper pitched roof and had the same total height, same square footage, just changing from a normal gabled roof to a Dutch roof is a pretty significant change in a design element that might not be appropriate for the neighborhood.
I agree. Which, from a building perspective, from a permitted perspective, that's a remodel. Because technically, if you have one wall standing, it's a remodel. What it looks like, you know, that's another story. But it, I don't know, you, you start to get down to a slippery slope, and then you start, you know, doing everything that's like, what I'm all about, against is adding more code, adding more stuff, where it just gets more...
Encumbered.
It gets, it's already over-encumbered and wanting to add more and more for all the specifics and, you know, you look at any city, their, their permitted code from 30 years ago was like this, and today it's like this. Right? Things change, but it's like, ah. No one can tackle that here.
You have, you know, people are getting...
Yeah, well, it's like you said, as the economy keeps going and things become more valuable and, I don't know.
You know, and it could be as simple as just reducing the 30% to something smaller so that we would capture more of these changes.
Yeah, but like you said, this is a unique situation in that this doesn't happen all the time. It's pretty rare.
Yep.
It is really rare. But I...
We're, sorry, we're adding, changing the definition to add street-facing facades. Really, that's what you care about, right? It's not area.
When you're massing.
It's not area, it's street, it's what it looks like from a street. So if it, if there was some way to describe that more clearly, to get at, pressure base singer's suggestion about, you know, what is significant, you know, or the roof. It's, it would, it would be the street-facing elements, not the area. Because you don't really care, you don't really care how much area is inside so much, as long as the massing's compatible.
The massing, you know, it's a small, tiny little house, but I do remember driving by a month or two ago, and I called you. I said, what, did we miss this? Did I not, was I not there at that meeting? Because it was like, it stuck out like a sore thumb, and it looks the same as it did when I called you, what, it was a month and a half?
Did they put a stopper on it?
We, at the very beginning, when they were doing the demo, we kind of caught it and made sure that we got the right information so that we could do this calculation. But that was months and months ago, when they started the demo.
It could be something where you do reduce the percentage, I don't know, but I think in this case, it's just so unique.
And is there any way that you could really give the parameters to like the building officials or whatever as far as, you know, changing the, the character and stuff? You really can't do anything like that, but, but like, in case, like the, the massing, because to go from a pretty insignificant, you know, pitched roof and...
Tiny little house.
Yeah, and then it grows into a gambrel, almost like...
It's just tiny, though. I mean, it still looks tall, but it's tiny.
But it changes the whole character of the, the building.
Yeah. Sometimes that character that they change is better, right? And I don't know if it's going from bad to worse, or good to better, based on what was there.
Well, that's so subjective.
Right, 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 right.
That's the hard part.
Yeah, it's like, how do you start, you know, putting stopgaps in every little thing? And it's just become so difficult and convoluted, it's like, ah.
Well, and this is kind of like, it says, it's, it's a, it doesn't be, with the way that it looks now, it doesn't fit into the neighborhood and the type, the style of architecture in the neighborhood, you know, and stuff, so.
Well, I'll go on to demolition, because that's also kind of part of this.
Denise wants to make a comment. Do we take comments for work sessions?
We can, you, you're absolutely welcome to.
Do we need to do that at a certain time, or?
No, you can do it whenever you want.
You want to do it before you go on the demo?
Sure, that's fine with me, it's up to you.
Oh, then you want to come up?
Please, if I may.
Yeah.
Good evening, Denise McGriff, 30-plus-year resident and steward of my historic home in the McLaughlin neighborhood. And I'm saying that for a very specific reason. So to answer your question, Ken, this was a project that was started on the weekend. They did not have a demolition permit. They had a mechanical permit, which was stapled to the side of the house. The reason that my phone blew up over that weekend is that all the neighbors around it were really upset about the fact that this person, who was, you know, unfortunately not from our community, started working on this project, and everybody wanted to know why they were doing it without permits. So it's, again, while you think this is rare, this is happening consistently and constantly, particularly in our neighborhood. And I don't know how it is going in your neighborhood, but this is happening regularly. This is not the only house that this has happened to. There's one at the end of Washington Street that this occurred. And neighbors brought that to the city and said, ah, I've got pictures of it, but I don't think you have pictures. It was a smaller house that's on the inventory, and all of a sudden, it's two and a half stories now. So, what my concern is, and the reason why I brought this to the city commission, was that I really feel that there's a little bit of a disconnect in terms of, I guess, the way that it was interpreted by several people. And again, this is why I'm hoping that you will agree to take this on now. Because I think, as you said, more and more people are gonna find these little tiny houses. They're, you know, they're well-meaning, they're not in the community, they don't really care, and they're gonna start working, and we're gonna see more and more of this happening. I mean, it's already happening, like I said, I know of at least three that have happened within the last two years. So this is gonna continue happening. And it's not so much that we want, that I want to, and I'm gonna speak for myself, I want to add more stuff to the code. I want it to be very clear. I know that you, as a builder, and the code says if you leave one wall, well, I mean, I think they consciously did that so that they didn't have to go through any review. And, you know, I don't know, I don't want to try to figure out what somebody's intent is. But you can clearly see on this example, that this is something that is completely out of character with the neighborhood. I doubt that if it had come to you, you would not have approved. And it's not, it's not even a Dutch gambrel roof, it's, it's a barn roof. That you would have approved that, you would have made some, some, some constructive suggestions about how they could alter it. The other big issue was the information they submitted. It was a site plan and a building plan that was not even to scale. So I'm not even sure how city staff figured out what, what they were telling them. So you couldn't even verify the information. Somebody in our neighborhood went to the assessor's office and looked up the information. Well, again, it probably was one of those second-story additions, I mean, second-story issues where, like you said, the roof went like this. I don't think a person who was five and a half feet could stand up in there. So they made it into a room. Legally, was it habitable? I don't know. I don't think there was anything in the records that said it was habitable. So, based on some calculations that I did, it, it exceeded the 30% based on what I could see. And like I said, if we'd had a site plan submitted for the building permit, when they finally did do one, that was to scale, we could have figured it out, but there was no scale on it. So it was just, we took their word for it. I think part of the issue that I have is that, you know, this is, this is not safeguarding our historic district and our cultural heritage, as it states in, in section B in the purpose. And we need to look at how the cultural heritage is embodied and reflected in the improvements that are made in this district. I don't want to prevent anybody from adding on to their house. But in my, in my way of thinking, you tear down everything, that's not remodeling. That's, that's what I consider to be new construction, and that's just my interpretat-interpretation. So, you know, are we gonna have people coming in, leaving two walls, three walls? You know, are they gonna leave part of this or that? So I don't know if the number is 10%, 5%. I don't know what that is, but I'm, I'm willing to put some energy and time into figuring this out and working with you and other people in the community to, to try to, to try to figure out how to make this work. Again, people should be able to remodel their house, they should be able to do things to their houses. But again, it has, this is gonna have such a detrimental effect on that portion of the neighborhood. And we've already got, you know, really cranky people over there now, because they, you know, they didn't see anything happening. He did finally get a permit after the city shut him down.
He didn't have a permit?
No, to demo, no, no demo permit.
I don't know how they could have got a permit without engineering on that thing.
Again, agreed, yes, they got a mechanical permit, that was the only thing posted. So, people just start doing stuff.
On the weekend.
On the weekends, and if there aren't any consequences, this isn't happening. I know that there, I have friends who live in Selwood, and it's not a district at all, but this happens on a regular basis, base, basis in Selwood. Little tiny houses, all of a sudden, they're gone. You know, somebody's torn them down, you don't see any permits, and all of a sudden, something else is going up, and then, oh gee, I didn't know I had to get a permit. My, my professional motto has always been, trust, but you verify it. You just verify it. I, I will take anybody's word for it, but if I have the slightest doubt, I want to just check it. I just want to make sure that what they're saying is correct. And in this case, I don't have any idea of what it was, what it was. Again, I don't know how we can submit a site plan that isn't to scale. So I really hope that because we have money, that this is, is, you know, this is moving forward, because I see this is gonna continue to happen. And I don't want to think ill of, of people, but boy, I tell you, you know, when your phone's ringing on the weekends and stuff is going on, you just, you just get so discouraged. You just kind of say, you know, why don't people just do the right thing? And I don't have the answer to that, because if we did, we'd all be, all be millions.
Thanks, Denise.
So, please, consider this, it's, it's, I think it's serious, it's more than just this house. I think it's gonna affect other parts of the neighborhood. And, you know, thank goodness in Kanima, they have more review. And so things are going to get looked at carefully. And you've got some great people in Kanima who are, you know, Ken for one, who's looking at stuff and saying, hey, yeah, you know, maybe you need to go talk to the city, which is, you know, my, my thing. I say, you know, you really need to go talk to the city. I don't go and talk to the people, but I tell my neighbors, please call the city. And, but who do you call on the weekend? You know, they, they call, they call their neighbor and say, could you come over and look at this? And I thought, what the heck's going on here? So, that is all I really want to say, but again, we have a lot of, gee, I'm doing permit stuff on the week, I'm doing non-permit stuff on the weekends. And thank you for considering this. It was unanimous at the city commission. I talked to the manager, got brought forward, and everybody on the commission said, yes, please, let's refer this to historic review board, we want them to take a look at this and have some community input, and then, let's try to make this better. So thank you.
Thanks.
Ellie, do you know what other cities, districts do? Are they addressing this too?
Well...
You probably haven't had a chance to look.
We, I haven't, I haven't dug into that exactly, especially for the new construction piece of it, or for, you know, non-designated structures in historic districts. I mean, that's part of the work that we would do with, with the intern, is ask, ask them to, you know, do some research and see what other jurisdictions are doing. We do know a little bit more about what other jurisdictions are doing with demolition review, but not necessarily the new construction.
Okay, demolition.
Yeah, so, related to this is demolition, because we, we, right now, we're kind of reliant on the building official's determination. So, for example, this one, they left up one wall and the flooring, and the building official made the call that it was a remodel. And so, if, if he, if the determination had been that it was demolition, then clearly, the new building would be new construction, and it would come to you for review. So because we're relying on the building official, who, the building code doesn't have a clear definition of remodel versus demolition, so it's really up to the building official on a case-by-case basis. So, it could behoove us to kind of have our own definition of demolition versus remodel for the purposes of, of something like that. We also, I mean, you may have noticed that sometimes there are accessory structures on historic properties, even designated properties, that have no significance. You know, they're falling apart, they're, they were not original, but the owner has to end up applying for demolition review anyway. So in some jurisdictions, they tackle that differently, where they make that a, like a type-two level review instead of a, a historic review board level review, where it can be approved by staff with a public notice. And so that might streamline things for folks a bit. And then there's also a, there's been a dispute over whether demolition review applies to non-designated structures. Our interpretation is that it does not. But we, our code could be more clear on that, so that it's not really up for interpretation as much. So there are some improvements we could make to our demolition review process, definition and code as well, that we would probably fold into this process if we were to tackle this later this year.
I'm convinced that it's something we should take on.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, like, in that example of that house, when they only keep one wall of the thing, that's not a remodel.
Yes, it is.
It is?
Yes.
By definition?
Yes, I've done it several times over 25 years.
Really?
Taking down, or it was something in, leaving a wall.
Just the garage.
Mainly county, but...
Okay, I saw pictures.
Yeah.
I saw pictures otherwise, but...
But that's, that's considered a remodel.
But, and it may not affect your, your square footage, and if that's how we defined what the thirty percent is, but if it's by, if more than thirty percent of the fabric of the house, you know, as in, you know, all the walls and stuff, you know, it's not just defined as, I think that's our, but if it's just not defined as our square footage.
Yeah.
Do you know what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah. I mean, demolition's a whole nother ball, ball of wax, but like what we did last month when they, we approved the demo of the garage?
Mm-hmm.
Or no, the house, it was the house. I mean, Kanema, that was pretty obvious, that thing needed to go.
You were here.
Was I here?
It was the house in Kanema.
For that trial, one day, it's been the Lord of the Gods for the entire time I've lived in Kanema.
Yeah.
At least you were living in that.
Yeah, yeah, that was like beyond.
Yeah, so I mean, that was pretty easy to do, right?
Absolutely.
But if you say, okay, if a structure's going to be more than thirty percent, then there's going to be a demolition part of that as well, right? That you have to review.
Right.
But I think, yes, there's a stopgap here, if somebody's going to do something, and the city's going to, supposed to let the HRB know. Their policies, like it says, well, they probably are gray.
Hmm, I don't know. Yeah, I think this is a project that we should definitely address, as like, you know, with what John said, it's probably going to be happening more.
I think it will, because, like what Denise says, I, what's starting to happen probably here a little bit is what happens in first edition in Lake Oswego. That whole area is completely changed by bigger homes.
The Morland, East Morland.
And East Morland, yeah, but places like, you know, Lake Oswego, maybe a little bit in Willamette, that's where people are starting to find projects that are going to do things like this more and more, because we're in a city, there's still stuff here, and it's a little bit more affordable, and so, and it might be something where it comes to the board, because it is becoming more rampant, I guess. And it's also economy-driven, too.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
So...
All right, well, it sounds like I have direction to go ahead and pursue hiring an intern to start this summer, I'll be back in May, and so...
Which year?
We would, we would hire an intern, probably, probably a PSU student, that their term ends mid-June, mid to late June, so they would probably start at the end of June, and then we could work through the summer and fall on this.
I have a question, if we're done talking about this, that I can ask, so this is just a question I have.
Do we, but do we need to make a motion on that, or is it, we're just giving you direction? Because it's a work session.
Yeah, yeah, there's no motion needed.
But if we're done talking about that, I had something to ask.
Okay.
Uh, when, like the case of when we had to deal with the guy with the siding recently, when things get approved, and they go get their building permit, do those conditions go with the permitted packet?
Um, so they...
As a hard copy?
We send them, not necessarily. One thing we're thinking about doing, so we could add them, so they usually have conditions on their building permit, and we could add any of the planning conditions. The other thing that we're considering doing is either requiring or strongly recommending that they have a pre-construction meeting, so for commercial projects, for example, we have pre-con or pre-construction meetings with our public works department and our planning department, bef-, you know, before those permits are issued and work begins, so that the contractors know exactly who to contact and what they have, what they need to do. So for historic, but we don't do that for residential, so like, all the new homes in Kanema that are going up, we don't do that.
But see, when you get a permitted packet, it's the site plan, the drawings, engineering, trust package, all this stuff, I think there needs to be something, if it has to come before the board, that enables them to get a permit, that that should be part of the packet.
Mm-hmm.
That when that permit's picked up, that those documents are stapled to the plans, so they have that hard copy, that it's there, so that something like that, again, if it happens, it's like one more stopgap.
Yep.
That you've, you've been told, given, and all this stuff, does that make sense?
Yeah.
I would like to see something like that with the permitted packet from the planning department.
And even if you have a, you know, it would obviously probably be a separate sheet, but have it, you know, with, at the top, this is historic property, you know, and then it's, yeah, and then it's, you know, pay attention.
That's something we can easily do, I mean, we do, as soon as the decision is made, like, the next day, I mail out a notice of decision with the list of conditions, so everybody gets it, but then sometimes a lot of time passes, right, between design and construction.
Or they change.
I'm just all about a hard copy on a plan.
Yep.
If they could do it, yes, Denise?
My question is, is that whenever we...
Then we're going to finish.
This is something that was done regularly when I worked for the city, the building department, which was one and a half guys, got a copy of the design, of whatever the decision was from the HRB, and it was always attached to the packet at that time. I don't know what they do now, but I just assume that they were still doing it.
They should do it if they're not.
The building official was always very aware of, well, Ron was just one of those exceptional people, that he knew if something was going to historic review.
He could have lots of balls.
He would look, he would say, hey, we saw such and such, we were out in the field, is this designated? And he'd check in with us all the time and ask us, and he would, you know, he didn't have a handheld computer at the time, but it was always attached to whatever it went out to the building department. So we have more people in building, maybe everybody in the building department needs to get a copy of the final decision, your certificate of appropriateness, which is what it's officially called.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea. Okay, we're going to finish, and be back in...